Mr. Bozen.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Ms. Creighton Smith. Mr. Childs.
Here.
Ms. Wilder. Mr. Foyce.
I have a motion, please.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First up, we have a presentation by the Historic Preservation Commission regarding 521 Pine Street.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So, as you may recall, the city of Waterloo acquired 521 Pine Street in March of 2016. We originally had a development agreement as part of a multi-phase development agreement on it with JSA. They did fix up the two buildings further down along Franklin on East Second. And then their intent was to move on to the two homes that we had on Pine Street. They did transfer the other Pine Street property, 516, I believe, to Habitat. And then 521 was not quite working out. Habitat has also looked at 521 Pine Street to see if they could make the numbers work for rehabilitation on it. You can see from the pictures attached there that it's in pretty rough shape. So, moving ahead without finding a developer, we're looking at demolition. We took it to the Historic Preservation Commission in March of 2025. They tabled it as they thought that they might be able to help find some developers for it. And obviously, I think we all would like to see it rehabilitated if we can. At the last meeting, it was tabled to get an ask for a work session to discuss with the council further before we would move ahead with any other action. So, there are members of the Historic Preservation Commission here to talk with you today.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to talk about this property. I don't have anything specifically prepared for today, but I can just...
Really quick, can you identify yourself?
Sorry about that. Yvonne Valchuff. I am, yeah, so I'm on the Historic Preservation Commission, and I also happen to live in, well, in the neighborhood where the property is located. So, kind of, so personally, you know, have strong feelings about the property on multiple levels there. As part of, as a member of the commission and also as a, as a member of the neighborhood. So, Noel already gave a summary of the property and how many times it's been through the commission. And, yeah, just really, we're reluctant to, to vote in favor of the property being demolished. Our neighborhood is on the National Register of Historic Places. So, I think I'd like for you all to take that strongly into consideration as you ultimately move towards making a final decision. But ultimately, we just see the property as being significant to the neighborhood, and it's, and we feel that it's worth being preserved for at least the immediate future with the hopes that a developer will in time come forth. I mean, there's been a lot of good things that have been happening in our community. Habitat's been a vital player. Unfortunately, they can't take on the project right now. JSA had made the commitment, like Noel mentioned, but they have since had to pivot. And, I mean, they've done really great work as well with the two properties on Third that were renovated. But I guess part of, you know, part of our question is, you know, I mean, there's, obviously, there's plenty of properties in our communities that are in a similar state. But we just really would like to see if there's an opportunity to really to leave the property as is, at least for now, with the hopes that in the next, if it's not right now, in the next one or two years, somebody might, a developer might come along. Maybe one of the partners that I've, that I already mentioned that have been doing some work in the neighborhood might come back in, in a few years and say, okay, now we are ready to take on the project. I mean, speaking personally for myself as well, I think at some point, that is something that I would be potentially interested in doing, doing some, that type of rehab work as well. But, so, that's, that's a little bit about kind of our rationale behind wanting to keep, preserve the property. We think it's, it does add value to our historic neighborhood. One thing that we threw out, or that I threw out last time during the Historic Preservation Commission meeting when we last voted on the property was, I mean, I'd be willing to, you know, to spearhead, you know, an effort in the neighborhood to, you know, to kind of to help maintain the property a little bit. I mean, right now, it's a little bit overgrown, so be willing to do some of that work and find some volunteers to kind of help out with that. And then additionally, you know, potentially do some other work, like boarding up, helping board up the windows and just kind of help keep the property, as it sits there, you know, help the property just look, not be less of an eyesore. Another item that I just want council to consider, just, just as really, just as a process overall, just moving ahead with these properties. So, if the, if the property of the building is ultimately deemed, if the decision is to raise the building, right, that's going to cost $50,000, $60,000, there's potential abatement, that's going to have to happen. I mean, just the cost to demolish the property is going to cost the city dollars. And then in the end, so a bunch of money is going to be spent. In the end, that house is going to be gone. So, I just think, I think it'd be good to just look at that process and how, I think there's some improvements that could be made on that end. I think there's, maybe there's, there's ways, I think, that once the city takes ownership of a property, I think there's ways to be more proactive on the, on the front end of things, right? So, for instance, right now, so the house has, on the backside, on the north side has a, there's a hole in the roof. That's really, as you all know, once the roof goes on a property, I mean, it's going to, it doesn't take long for the elements to take effect and for that property to really, it expedites the, the time it takes for the property to really start deteriorating. So, I think there's some simple things that I think that the city could do once the property is taken ownership of to just, at least, to limit the deterioration, knowing that on the back end, if nothing happens to the property, there's going to be a bunch of money spent to demolish it. So, those are just some thoughts on that end. I think there's maybe some things that can be done to be more proactive in, in preserving some of these properties rather than ending up kind of being in the state that they are, like this one right now, so.
Another question for Noel. Since we've owned this for nine years, how many, how many people have looked at it and decided that they didn't want to rehab it, besides JSA and Habitat?
I know that, I'd probably say three or four. I know that one of the recent Historic Preservation Members, Jared Hoddle, just showed somebody the site just recently. And I don't think that they are willing to move ahead with it. Yvonne, I don't know if you had somebody you had showed it to as well just recently. I'd, we're definitely willing to show it to others, but...
Did reach out to some, some developers that I thought might have some interest in, and they just, I think it was just too short notice. I mean, they already had, kind of, they'd already mapped out, you know, the, their coming year or two with other projects.
My concern is it's just going to continue to get worse. The holes in the roof, black mold, the foundation giving away on that one whole side of the house. I mean, you're looking at that foundation, it's, I mean, there's, it's a lot of work just to, just to bring it up to standards. Correct me if I'm wrong, but what I'm reading here says it's not on the historical registry. I believe it said...
The neighborhood is on the National Register.
It says the structure does not have a rating for historical significance in the paperwork I just got.
I can explain that.
Good.
Just Gowan Planning Staff. So, what that says, so this building was surveyed for architectural significance. It does have an A rating in architectural significance. It does not have a rating for historical significance. When they did the surveys, they would look at both architecture and historical impact of the house. So, it is an A structure, which is why it went before the Historic Commission to demolish it, since it would be considered individually eligible based on architectural features.
And I'm just trying to wrap my head around how much more it would deteriorate if it sat vacant for two more years without someone stepping forward to rehab it. I don't, I don't see it getting any better unless it's completely sealed up. And then, then you're going to be dealing with your black mold issue that's inside there anyway. I mean, you're going to have to tear all the wall, the interior walls out and whatever it's going to take. Okay, thank you for your time.
Yes, sir.
So, so what are we asking for at this meeting today? We're trying to save this site. So, here's my question. We've already determined that it, nobody wants it because it's been on the market, or the city has owned it for how long? So, nobody wants it. You live in the neighborhood. Do you want to look at it for another two years in its current condition? And, you know, so basically, I'm having a hard time figuring out what, what we're doing here, trying to save a building that nobody wants.
There has been a tremendous, tremendous amount of context. There's been a lot of development in our neighborhood. We've lived there for about eight, nine years. There's been a lot of progress between Habitat and other, there's primarily Habitat, JSA, and there've been other developers that have been doing a lot of great work in our neighborhood. So, everything is, so everything is trending up. So, I would say, so, yeah, so thought process is that I can volunteer time, I can find volunteers to help clean up the property. I can, I think boarding up windows, those are all things within, that I'm comfortable doing. I think when it comes to doing some repairs to the, to the roof, I think that's where it gets a little iffy. I'm probably not willing to do some of those repairs, but I'm, so as a neighborhood member, I'm willing to do some of those things on my own time. I think it's, I think it's worth preserving because I see our neighborhood moving in the right direction.
Yeah, and there's been great things, like you said, with Habitat and everything else.
Right, right. And I think, and I see that house, and I, architecturally, I see that a house is a vital piece of our, of the context of our neighborhood. I mean, there's already been enough that's been lost, which is why Habitat's been able to develop so many, you know, has been able to do what they've done.
So, are there a lot of people in the neighborhood that have similar thoughts? Is you that they want to save it, or is there thoughts that they really want it gone?
There are, yes.
They want to look at, the neighborhood is okay looking at it for possibly two more years before anything is developed?
I think, I think everyone can agree that, I mean, everyone would like to see a property that is, that is, at least, that is kept up. But there's, this is not the only property in our neighborhood that currently looks like that. I mean, there's more on the north side of the, like, the north side edges of our neighborhood. There's, there's properties that are in a similar state in terms of how they're boarded up. They probably don't have, like, the biggest difference is that roof leak, which, again, once you have that hole in the, in the roof, I mean, it's just, it's, it becomes really difficult to, to keep the deterioration at bay. So, that's, that's a little bit of what I'm pleading with here is, is I'm hoping that we can find like a more proactive way to, to move forward with, with this particular property and maybe just may, maybe kind of start to set the blueprint for properties moving forward. Just a little bit better maintenance on the front end, specifically with this property. If there's, if there can be a balance found where the city can commit some dollars to just repair the hole on the north side, and then I can, I would be happy to volunteer some of my own time to, to help with the additional upkeep of the property. And then with the hopes that if, if at least any further deterioration can be, can be halted, that somebody will... And I think the conversation with some of those developers that we reached out to, I think, changes, right? If we can say, okay, we're going to, we're going to preserve the property, it's going to be, it's not going to deteriorate any further for the, like, next couple, three years, would you now be willing to strategically plan and, and put this property back on your radar to rehabilitate it?
Thank you.
So, Yvonne, sorry, before you step away.
I'm sweating up here.
I know. So, what's the recommenda, just for clarification, the recommendation from the Historical Preservation is just to continue to pause, right? And, and not do anything with it for the foreseeable future, right?
We certainly don't want to demolish the property, but we also don't see that, we don't, I also don't want to see it just stay as is. I think something has to, if it's going to stay, I'd like to see something, some repairs be done so that further deterioration...
Listen, I, my house was, the house I live in was built in 1917, you know, and it sat vacant for many years. It didn't have nearly the significance of the architectural piece that you have and the neighborhood aspect of it. Most of the houses were built in the 40s and 50s, you know, you don't have that neighborhood aspect. So, I understand what you, what you're asking, I think, is for us not to get rid of it, to allow the neighborhood to find some time and continue to look for resources to do some things there, correct?
Correct, especially when there's, again, there's so many good things happening in the neighborhood. It's not as if the neighborhood as a whole is just, there's just nothing really happening, and there's just no, there's no hope, right? I mean, again, there's been, there's a lot of good things happening. So, I just think, I feel like we could just really just miss the moment, right, just by a year, all of a sudden, now there is... And I'm, I'm a little bit unclear in terms of exactly how, what the effort looks like. I'm pleased to see that lately that I've seen, you know, there's been a lot of social media posts about, you know, some of the, some of the other properties that the city owns. I mean, I think there's, so I've, I've seen that on my end, just from my own perspective, that there's been more proactivity to advertise those and to get those properties on social media, to get more, to gather more interest. But just a little bit unclear on this particular property, you know, what effort, I mean, really, there, there has been, I, I know there has been an effort, but it's just a little bit unclear to me what that's looked like in terms of really trying to genuinely, genuinely find, you know, interested developers aside from the, you know, from the usual suspects, like those partners that have been doing a lot of work in our neighborhood.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes, so my question was really for Noel. And has there been any estimate on what it would take to, you know, repair the roof or get it to where the deterioration is kind of halted in order to hold it over until somebody could get, redevelop it?
We, we've done some on the Dunsmore in the past, and that's a little bit different structure in terms of what it's made of. I mean, I would imagine if we were really to stabilize it in terms of really getting in there and stabilizing the, the foundation and the roof, at least, is you're probably getting up into the $70,000 amount pretty quickly.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anybody else from your commission that would like to add anything? Council, any further questions? Okay, so if we have any further questions, we'll reach out to Noel, Yvonne, or any of, from the commission. So, thank you for being here this evening. We appreciate that. All right. Next up, we have a discussion of updates to the Public Works facility. Mr. Bennett.
Go ahead and just get started, and then if it, it shows up, okay. All right. Good afternoon. Randy Bennett, Public Works Division Manager. So, today, kind of, I want to just give an update as far as some strategic planning that we're wanting to do at the Public Works site when it comes to primarily what we, primarily want to focus on today is going to be the fuel site, but then some other additions that we need to do at the facility, of which we want to try to work with an architect to make sure that we lay things out appropriately to work, not only with a, a site that was a brownfield site, but then also to see if we can't get all those items to kind of fit onto it. So, as you can kind of see the picture there, this, the field, the current fuel site, which is at 11th and Blackhawk, it was built in 1993. You know, we purchased just a little bit, under a million gallons of fuel annually. It varies from year to year, especially depending on snow removal. Currently, it, we provide fuel for all city departments within the city, along with the schools, Met Transit, and the county, and the Sheriff's Department, just to name some of them. So, currently, the site is inspected annually. We're compliant and everything as far as when it comes to the, the DNR inspections and things like that. But as you can see, you know, being 1993, we're hitting the tail end of the life cycle, which typically is 20 to 30 years. We're just a little bit over that, but, but the site is good. It's been inspected. We did get hit by lightning a couple of years back where we had to update some of the, the software to it, along with the spill detection, spill detection. You know, so when it comes to that, we're actually doing pretty good. So, one of the things, when the site was originally installed, it was at 11th and Blackhawk, and that's when the fleet maintenance was across the street. So, strategically, that made sense to have the site close to that. That'd be the black roof there that's kind of to the left. The yard that's right to the, to the right of it is where we store our utility poles. And just on the other side of that is like the bus barn, Met Transit, and that is kind of on that same block. But since then, you know, Public Works has moved to 625 Glenwood, where it's currently at. And one of the things that we're wanting to do is move the site there, just because it would be strategically better for us to have it there. One of the things, you know, when we start talking about the, the current site, you know, with the age, currently, it's an underground tank facility, which, that's not too bad because you kind of utilize the space kind of where you're at. But what some of the downside is, is, you know, it's a little harder to do some of your inspections without doing like the software we're doing, where it continually monitors it to make sure there's no leaks when you're not pumping fuel. And of course, when they pump fuel, it's not able to do that. But that's not necessarily a requirement by the DNR, but it is something that we went to, especially like with the age of where that's at. But the current site, like I said, the island's got some deterioration. There's some, the roof and stuff's kind of showing its age. One of the things that we would like to do is go to above ground. It's a little bit easier because we are required to do inspections all the time to the facility, just looking at piping and looking at the software to the dispensers and all of that, kind of like what we need to do. So, as we're kind of talking about the site, this is actually the new Public Works site. So, we did kind of work with Envision a few years back, just kind of a, an overall view as far as like the different land for which the, the city has right there, but then looking at the other things for which we would like to try to do on the existing site, you know, with the limitations as far as kind of being right next to a residential area. So, with that being said, one of the things that we kind of want to look at putting on this existing site is a flood storage building. So, one of the things that we've been kind of looking at was like after the flood of '08 and '16, Waste Management is one of the departments is within Public Works. The, the plant itself becomes an island. We've got an excellent, excellent levee system that around that. But, you know, there is a lot of equipment, whether it's pumps, trucks, well, TV, back trucks, all those things that are kind of, that are staging that. And we have right at 40, or 40 or 30, just drew a blank on that number. We have 30 pumps, anywhere between four and six inch pumps, and some are hydraulic, and then we have four backup generators. That anytime when we have a flood, those are things that we have to pull out all the time. The one thing that, what we had when visiting with the staff is when we're getting into these larger events, is we're spending a lot of time mobilizing and moving equipment out, whether it was, at that '08 and '16, they stored it out at Crossroads, which we would probably do something different going forward, but, you know, as far as where, where to stage those. But right now, we have the pumps and every nook and cranny, some of them actually have to sit outside, which is, it's tough on them, especially with the climate that we have, in northern climate. But the other thing that we have stored is our invisible walls, for which we've got nine different locations, or nine different spots at five different locations for which we have those. You know, it's, it's great as far as having the close proximity. Some of the downside to it is, is just where we do get some of the, the water and the debris and stuff that kind of gets into them. And it's not at all the locations, but it's also kind of a, it's hard for staff kind of getting in there, pulling some of those out. So, it does kind of show some of the age as far as the gaskets, you know, while they're made out of aluminum and galvanized, you know, they hold up pretty good. But if we can have them in a little bit better storage. So, one of the things that we'd like to do is, is move that to Public Works, because these are those sites, but we also have some of those materials that are actually stored at Public Works. We have them at building maintenance and stuff, too. So, this is something that we, we would like to try to do different. Also, in the Public Works complex, the top left picture, that's actually our brine maker. The two outside tanks is our dual wall for our brine. Over to the right is just where we have some outdoor equipment, or equipment that's stored outside, I should say. Whether it's refuse trucks, we have a lot of street equipment, there's other traffic. We have multiple departments that unfortunately, we just don't have enough space to get everything inside. So, it would be nice if we could look at some additional storage for that. The other thing, this is the new hoop building that we just built a few years back within Public Works. That was, that was, a lot of that was done internally with some external help as far as bidding the hoop building, but cooperation between engineering and Public Works, so that was a good thing. But as you can see, all the spreaders, they sit outside. You know, there's a lot of money sitting there, anywhere from 15 to almost 30,000, you know, depending on the spreaders and that. That, it's just, it's, it's hard on them. But to the right of the building, it would be nice if we could, the brine building, it would be more strategic where we're not having to open and close a door all the time when the guys go to get material. The other thing for which we'd like to do is look at moving code enforcement into Public Works. I know strategically, there's some, you know, with moving City Hall to a new location. Currently, code enforcement right now, actually, they start and end the day at Public Works. That's where they kind of stage their vehicles. They also work all the time with our sanitation department because we're, we're the ones that usually have to coordinate with them when we do have to do, do the cleanups. So, they, they would actually help with some of the communication on that if we would kind of, to move them in there, to be able to do that. So, as we're kind of talking about these other things that, while we're not necessarily looking at trying to do all those other buildings and stuff right now, we strategically want to make sure that when we go to do the fuel site, which we, we do need to do right now, and, and move forward with trying to get that, we want to strategically lay this out in the most ergonomical way that we can to try to squeeze all of that other stuff in there if we possibly can, if we're capable with doing that. So, I guess with that, I guess, is there any questions on, on that?
Mr. Bozen.
What would happen, what would we be doing with the fuel pumps on Blackhawk?
Yep.
No, I'm asking, what are you going to do with them?
Yeah, I know at one time, we kind of talked about whether or not, you know, it would, strategically, it would be great to have one on both sides of the river. But I think with some addition of the new bridge, to be honest with you, it's a lot to try to maintain both sites. So, if it was... So if it was up to us, what I'd like to do is try to work with the schools to see if that would potentially be something they would be interested in, and then whether they would choose to do that, because they, they do use quite a bit of, quite a bit of fuel that it would probably more than pay for on their, on their standpoint. On a yearly average, just for what we save on fuel, it's a little over $260,000 a year just in the difference for what we can purchase ourselves compared to buying it on the market on the rare occasions that when our site does go down and we have to pay for the fuel, even though they give us a discount. I mean, it, it, it would interest us.
My question is, is that if, if that fuel site is in the condition, is then that you want to abandon it? Why would someone want it in that condition?
Well, some of, I mean, just because the tanks would need to be updated, you know, the dispensers and some of the electronic and that stuff, you know, that's, that's newer. I mean, it would have to stay, you know, with that facility. If it's, and strategically, it's in a great location for them, it's right next to where their facility is at. So when I look at the overall plan as far as Public Works, I have to look at what's the most efficient thing for Public Works and where it's at now, you know, we, we have to top off fuel every single day for refuse and street, police, fire, you know, and strategically, if it's at Public Works, it makes it a little bit more sense having it there. One, I can get it on backup generation, which currently it's not. The other thing is we can kind of get it in a, a secured facility because like right now, we have it opened, because we've had issues with some vandalism, just the way it kind of sits.
Just recently.
Yes, we did.
But, so fire trucks and ambulances would have to get in there sometimes in the middle of the night to fuel. It wouldn't be an issue, but-
In which we have, you know, one of the things that we have just updated at the Public Works facility is we just did the FOB system, as you guys have FOBs. And we, we, we've utilized the same system and what we've done is we've put them in our vehicles to where they can come into the gate, it would open. So as far as access on that, that's what we'd end up doing to give them, to be able to get in and out.
But I'm, I'm just, the only reason I'm saying, I'm bringing it up is because there was, there was a train today from Canadian Northern Yard past Raymond, sitting there and for an indefinite amount of time, which your vehicles are, have to, all of a sudden, you know, like Independence Avenue was supposed to be closed because, because of the, of the asphalt resurfacing, and I'm just, it, it just, it's a really tough location sometimes to get into.
I can attest to that, yes. And, you know, but with the overlays, that's a short, short stint. For the most part, we can get in and out. Every morning, I can tell you, right on the Glenwood side, for about an hour, sometimes a little bit longer, we have a train that's blocking it up. But we strategically kind of been able to work around those.
It's, it's one thing to, to go down Mohawk with a, with an ambulance, it's another thing to go down Mohawk with the aerial, to try to come back around, you know, I mean, otherwise we're going to have to come down MLK and always come down Linden, just, just to avoid all of this stuff, you know? I'm just, I'm just looking at the complexity of getting vehicles in there at times.
And that's one department, yes. I, I, I mean, it would probably be in their interest to probably come down, because it's going to be on the Linden side is, is where this is going to be. So strategically, it'd make more sense to try to come down that side. But yes, there are times it, it does get blocked and they would have to go around and I, I'm not going to, unfortunately, that's just where we're located. We, we're, we got tracks on two, or three sides to get in.
Yes, you do. Thank you.
Any other counsel questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
I'm hoping to do adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.